Well, good afternoon. Today is April 7th, 2025, Rowan County Commission meeting. We've got folks here today. Good to see you all. Thank you for coming. We're going to begin our meeting as we always do. And we're going to have a pledge of allegiance. We'll also have a prayer from, it's actually our chaplain's son, Michael Taylor, will be providing the prayer today. Commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Dear and Father Lord, I thank you for this day. Lord, I thank you for our commissioners, for everything they do for us. Lord, I ask you to give them the wisdom that they need in decisions they make for our county. Lord, I just thank you for this county. I thank you for what they do. I would just ask you to be with this meeting today. In that name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Michael, for joining us.
Thank you.
All right, I've got one addition. There was an item that was provided funding approval to cover. This was from Anna. And so that's going to be added under budget amendments to consent item F. And I don't have any other changes. Any other changes, Commissioners? All right, if not, do we have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I move.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then we have the consent agenda before us. Motion to approve the consent agenda is amended.
I move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone for comment period? Anyone for comment? All right, then we'll move on. We've got some special recognition. Public Health Week, come on up. Welcome, welcome. Glad you're here. Good afternoon.
I believe you all have the proclamation for Public Health Week?
I do. You want it or you want me to read it?
I'm happy to read it, if it's something you would like me to do.
I can read it. In honor of, in honor of you guys, okay. All right, Rowan County Public Health, National Public Health Week proclamation. Whereas the health and well-being of our community members are of utmost importance, and whereas the week of April 7th through 13th, 2025, marks the 30th anniversary of National Public Health Week, with the theme of "It Starts Here," highlighting the importance of making a difference in our homes, communities, and state. Whereas public health professionals play a crucial role in preventing disease, promoting healthy lifestyles, and enduring equitable access, I'm sorry, ensuring equitable access to quality healthcare for all individuals. Whereas a person's health status can differ drastically by zip code due to differences in the built environment, environmental quality, community context, access to healthy food, education, and healthcare. Whereas the Rowan County Board of Commissioners, committed to promoting and protecting the health of our residents through evidence-based policies, programs, and services. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Rowan County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims the first full week of April as National Public Health Week in Rowan County. And be it resolved that during this week, we encourage our residents participate in activities promoting health and wellness, including physical activity, healthy eating, and preventive healthcare. And be it further resolved that we call upon all residences, businesses, schools, and community organizations to join us in prioritizing the health and well-being of our community through policies and initiatives that support public health and disease prevention. This the 7th day of April, 2025. I offer that up in the form of a motion. We have a second? Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Would you like to bring your team up? You've got some folks here with you, don't you?
Well, it's just me today.
Just you today?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I appreciate the board for their proclamation and for the support of public health.
Well, thank you. There's a lot going on locally in public health, new facilities being built, and y'all have been through a lot the past few years. We certainly appreciate you and the work that you do.
Thank you.
I think we'll be talking about you later.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. I'd also like to offer up as a motion, proclamation of Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, which is April 13th through 19th. You guys, come on, come on up here. Kind of out of sorts today. All right, this is Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 13th through 19th, 2025. Whereas the services and functions performed by the Rowan County Public Safety Telecommunicators are critical to the safety and welfare of the citizens of Rowan County and the municipalities. Whereas the public safety telecommunications provide 24-hour service seven days a week as a vital link in the chain of emergency services providers. Whereas these dedicated professionals are the initial point of contact for citizens in crisis situations who need emergency services assistance. And answering the public's daily cries for help, they are often instrumental in saving lives and reducing property damage when tragedy strikes. Now therefore, the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 13th through 19th, 2025, as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Rowan County, and urges all citizens to acknowledge the contributions of these loyal public servants. This 7th day of April, 2024, make that in the form of a motion. We have a second? Any other comments, discussion? I know we've been to visit you guys in the dark of the telecommunications facility. It's a great facility, and you guys are wonderful folks, and we've been there and observed and eaten some of the food that folks brought in for you. But we, we really do, you are the beginning point of an emergency response, and we know that. And how you do what you do, it's a technical job. And the fact that you are taking the first calls, and a lot of times, they are panicked, very emotional calls, and the way that you do that just promotes a tremendous amount of respect from us as commissioners in the county, but also for the citizens of Rowan County. We want to say thank you, because we are just citizens as well, and we've all probably had to call your number. So we appreciate you, appreciate what you do, and we just pray blessings on you as you take care of us. So thank you very much. Would we give them a round of applause? Chief, anything you'd like to say?
Just thank you for the proclamation. Thank you for the proclamation. Y'all come on up. So we have a couple of telecommunications just started with us last week, and some's been here with us for a while, came back from the lift, coming back.
All right, thank you guys very much. We appreciate your time and for being here. All right, thank you, Chief. All right, our next item is Child Community Protection Team, their annual report. Welcome. Thank you for being here with us.
Hi, thank you for having us. I'm Amy Brown, the Executive Director of Smart Start Rowan, here in Salisbury. We're a local nonprofit agency that serves children ages birth to five, as well as their families and early childhood educators. Smart Start is committed to laying the groundwork for future success at the most critical time in young children's lives, while working to ensure they enter school healthy, ready, and able to learn. The work of Smart Start, along with other partners like the Health Department, DSS, and the Terry Hess Child Advocacy Center, is vital to the well-being of young children, which is also linked to the economic development of our community. Smart Start works very closely with these three partner agencies to ensure children have access to affordable and high-quality childcare, healthcare and early intervention services, and parenting support programs. In addition to my role as the Director of Smart Start, I'm also honored to be the Chair of the Rowan Community Child Protection Team again for this year. And I wanted to go ahead and introduce to you the 2024 Annual Report, which you have a copy of. Page one outlines that all community child protection teams are tasked with important responsibilities regarding child health and well-being, and those responsibilities are also listed. Page two shows that Rowan County has a wide variety of team members from many child-serving agencies across the community. The annual report also includes information about case reviews and needs identified, as well as data to provide context for those identified needs. My colleagues will follow me to give you more descriptive information about some of that data in the report. The last page of the report lists community recommendations from the team to improve child well-being, as well as recommendations for the Board of Commissioners, including the annual proclamation of the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month.
Good afternoon. My name is Sean Edmund, and I am proud to represent the Terry Hess Child Advocacy Center, where every day we work to protect, support, and bring healing to some of the most vulnerable members of our community, our children. At Terry Hess, we provide a child-focused, trauma-informed response to reports of child abuse and neglect. By bringing together a multidisciplinary team, including law enforcement, child protective services, prosecutors, medical professionals, and mental health providers, we ensure children are heard, supported, and believed in a way that minimizes trauma and maximizes healing. In the past year, Terry Hess Child Advocacy Center served over 235 children and their families here in Rowan County. These are not just numbers. These are children who have experienced the unthinkable and are now on a path toward healing because of the coordinated compassionate care they receive through our center. Our prevention program, Stop Go Tell, is taught in every first and fifth grade classroom in Rowan County and reaches thousands of children each year. Today, I'm thrilled to share an exciting new step in that journey, the opening of Robins Loft, a dedicated space on our campus that expands our mental health and family support services. At Robins Loft, children who have experienced trauma can receive onsite, evidence-based therapy in a calm, welcoming environment. In addition, we are proud to offer PPP, Positive Parenting Program, education, which provides caregivers with practical tools to manage behavior, strengthen relationships, and create more stable, supportive home environments. This program is graciously supported by Smart Start Rowan and Rowan County Government, and touches hundreds of families each year. Robins Loft represents a powerful investment in our community's future. By addressing trauma early and supporting families in building healthy, positive relationships, we are not only helping children heal, we are helping prevent future abuse, reduce family stress, and promote long-term wellness. The Terry Hess Child Advocacy Center is honored to serve Rowan County, and we are deeply thankful for the support we receive from you. Your partnership makes this work possible. I invite you to visit Robins Loft and see firsthand the impact we're making together for children and families across our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. From a public health perspective, the purpose of Rowan Community Child Protection Team is to review the incidents and causes of children's deaths and recommend evidence-driven strategies for preventing child death, neglect, and abuse in the future. CCPTs, as it's abbreviated to, review all of the child deaths within the county, whether they have DSS involvement or not. And I greatly appreciate the collaboration across all of our agencies represented at Rowan's CCPT, who work together to identify whether a death could have been prevented and what initiatives we can implement together now to prevent something in the future. Rowan County has a unified CCP team, which is in the direction that most of the state is now moving in, instead of having two separate teams, one on fatalities and one on those children's deaths related to, or with DSS involvement. Child fatality review is a public health surveillance and prevention tool. It allows us to understand what is happening here in Rowan County and work across that interdisciplinary team to identify what may be able to prevent it in the future. From our 21 fatality cases in 2024, safe sleep was identified as one of the top causes of infant fatality. Diving deeper into the data, we also see that smoking during pregnancy can lead to outcomes of extreme prematurity and poor health conditions. At the state level, we have the NC quit line. Locally, we're here working with populations of young people and adults to prevent smoking and tobacco use, advocating for policy as a tool to reduce tobacco use, and implementing care management programs that help our pregnant women quit vaping and smoking during such a precious time in their lives. In addition, safe sleep, being that top cause, is discussed at every pediatric visit here in Rowan County, and our care management teams work to provide safe sleep trainings and safe spaces for families to actually put those babies down to sleep, like pack-and-play. We know this is just one piece of a bigger picture that we all are working on together, and we truly appreciate the agencies working to address these same issues and more, as we all really want that children are going to thrive and be happy and healthy here in Rowan County. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Josh Suts. I'm the Deputy Director for the Rowan County Department of Social Services. Thank you for having us today, and thank you for letting us share some information about what's going on in the community. The data around child abuse can sometimes be difficult to hear, because of course, it's about our children. As you can see in the report, despite having a slight decline in reports in 2024, overall CPS reports have been trending upward since 2020. Additionally, more families are receiving services for mandatory treatment through in-home services, and more youth are entering DSS custody as a result of abuse, neglect, or dependency. While there are a variety of factors that contribute to child abuse and neglect, as you can see in the report, substance use continues to play a significant role. It's fitting that the theme for this year, for Child Abuse Prevention Month, is Powered by Hope, Strengthened by Prevention. For our youth impacted by child abuse, there is hope. Rowan County has one of the highest rates, highest success rates in the state of achieving timely permanence for children who enter DSS custody. In 2024, 74 children were successfully achieved permanence through custody or guardianship with relative or kinship placements, and another 41 children were successfully reunified with their parent or caregiver. This level of success is only made possible by the support of our community partners. I also believe, as a community, our strength to impact child abuse is found in prevention. Prevention looks like all of us continuing to carry out some of our most important duties, which is to continue to work together for our children and those in our community that are depending on us. We thank you for your time and for your partnership. On behalf of the committee, we ask that you proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month here in Rowan County, and we ask that you review the additional recommendations for future consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, we appreciate y'all being here today with us. Thank you. We are kind of out of sorts. My fault, I'm sorry. Hold on. Usually sign everything after the meeting, but I signed it all before and sent it to her, sent it down to her. All right, we're going to go back.
You are?
Yeah. Judy and I are.
Yeah, there you go.
Proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. Whereas child maltreatment is a community problem, and finding a solution depends upon involvement among people throughout the community. And whereas child maltreatment occurs when parents find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and unable to cope. And whereas approximately 116,566 children were subjected, were subject of investigations of abuse, neglect, and/or dependency in North Carolina in fiscal year 2023. And whereas 20 children were victims of homicide by their parent or caretaker in North Carolina during the year 2022. And whereas the majority of child maltreatment cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community. And whereas the effects of child maltreatment are felt by whole communities and need to be addressed by the entire community. And whereas effective child maltreatment and prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Therefore, the Rowan County Commissioners, hereby proclaim April, 2025, as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Rowan County, and calls upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to prevent child maltreatment and strengthen the communities in which we live. This the 7th day of April, 2025. And I move that we adopt this resolution.
All right, next we have a public hearing for TEFRA, which is the federal tax law. Alan Robertson, Managing Partner, Robinson Bradshaw, is here to explain. So thank you and welcome. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're serving as bond counsel for a proposed issuance of taxes and bonds, the ultimate beneficiaries of which will be Novant Health and its affiliates, and it will provide funds for improvements at 19 of their hospitals, really all their hospitals throughout North and South Carolina. And what that means is some of the proceeds will be spent here in Rowan County, at Rowan Medical Center. The bonds are being issued by a governmental entity known as the National Finance Authority, based in New Hampshire. Under federal tax law, at TEFRA, the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, TEFRA instituted a requirement for a public hearing when tax and bond proceeds are going to be spent in a community, there to be a public hearing by the relevant governmental body. And that's why it's called, we call it a TEFRA hearing, and it's purely a federal tax law requirement. As an aside, you don't do that for your own bonds. TEFRA doesn't apply to true governmental bonds, but when you, as a county, are issuing bonds to yourself and your own project, you don't, you don't have to do them. So again, why we're here today is to ask you to conduct a public hearing, if there's anyone here wishes to speak about the issuance of the bonds or projects that are being financed, and after the public hearing, to ask you to approve the issuance of the bond. So, happy to answer questions, if I can clarify.
Just wanted to make sure that, that everybody understands that we are not under any obligation for this bond. There's a requirement for the application, and this is being done in, what, 18 other locations?
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I should have said that. Yes, this is not, the county has no financial responsibility by virtue of taking action. These are not bonds that you're issuing or have any financial responsibility for. And yes, there's approvals being given by 10 different local governments throughout North and South Carolina for this. So, Novant's 19 facilities located in 10 different jurisdictions throughout the state. We're having three of these hearings today. We had to split up between here, New Hanover, and under.
So Jay, we'll have a public hearing, and then close that, and will we vote to approve the resolution? Yep, I've got that. Yeah, okay. Don't go far. Appreciate you being here. We're going to open the floor to any public comment that there might be on this issue. I see none. We'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve this resolution of support for this item?
I move.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else we need to do, Jay? No? Is that all you need?
That's all we need. Thank you very much.
Okay.
This will help benefit citizens here with additional facilities and improvements. So thank you very much.
Safe travel. Thank you. All right, next item is farmland preservation discussion. It's going to be led by Jay or Aaron. We can, some months ago, we were approached by members of our farming leadership in talking about a fund that has been set up across the state in different counties, and they provided for us some examples of that, and the gist is pretty simple. If we have land that is considered in farmland or present, present value use, it, they pay a different tax rate than you and I do at our, for our home or our business. And if I get anything wrong, I'm looking back there at you guys, and you tell me if we're wrong. we're wrong. So, they, they get, they get a lower tax rate because it benefits the community that we have that land, and they're, they're producing food and crops and all that. So, for some time now, we've provided a, a different tax rate than you and I pay. But if, for whatever reason, a family decides they want to sell part or whole or all of that land, then there is a recapture of the taxes that were not paid for three years, and that's probably state statute. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So, if, for instance, it would have been taxed to you and I at $3,000 a year, but instead it's only taxed at $1,000 a year because it's in present use value, then that $2,000 a year, if it's purchased for development, would be recaptured and $6,000 would come back to the county because those were property taxes that were not paid to the county. So, that, up until now, has just gone back into our general fund, and so what has been brought to us is the, the issue of, of vanishing farms. And so, there are some farmers, a lot of farmers, who would like to place their farms into, tell me what the technical term is, conservation easements. But that doesn't come cheap. It's not free. It involves lawyers, it involves surveys, a lot of work, and so it could be in the tens of thousands of dollars. So, well-meaning farmers that would like to put their land in those easements, some of them cannot because it's a prohibitive cost. So, the idea has been broached with us that as that money is returned to the county to place it into a specific set-aside fund that could be used to provide expense, expense dollars to these farmers so that they could put those lands into these easements. Have I got anything wrong up to this point? All right? No? Okay. You're shaking your head, yes. I got it wrong, mister? I'm good. Keep going. Keep going. So, through a lot of work with Amy Lynn and some of our, our really good farming friends here, we have had some ideas sent to us, some different examples from different counties, and so we've had our attorney and our county manager working on this. And so, now we, we have a farmland preservation fund policy that we're going to present to the county, would be adopted effective today, and then it would, would go into effect April 7, 2025, for the July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2025 budget year. So, about the only thing that was still up in the air that we understood is the dollars that, that are returned to the county, there, there's not necessarily a, a set schedule of when these properties are purchased by folks from the farmers. So, we don't know how much is coming in, in any given year. It's conceivable that in the upcoming budget year, there could be zero that comes in. It's conceivable that there could be a million dollars that comes in, and since this is, this money will be fully set aside for that, and the question becomes how much of that zero or a million dollars would go, go into this fund and been, be set aside for this specific project. And so, talking with Jim and others, what we came up with is that 50% of collected deferred present use value taxes is defined in North Carolina General Statute 105. Not to exceed $100,000 in any given year shall be moved to a deferred revenue account for farmland preservation on any annual basis. Now, still, the full dollar amount is going to go into a designated fund, right? Right?
Yes.
Yes. And each year, because again, we don't know how much is coming into that, and frankly, we don't know what the demand will be. So, I, as I recall back to a lot of the conversations we've had, I think I remember the number 13, where we've got possibly 13 farms now are interested in this. So, but that is a lot of work, and it could be, and shake your head again if I'm right, this could be years' worth of work, right? And so, let's say that in this year, we found out it was a million dollars. The fact is, we don't need a million dollars in there because we don't have the farms ready to pull the trigger to go through that expense. So, what we wanted to do was to honor this, go ahead and provide this, and this would be an item that is in our budget each year, and then you guys just are going to let us know from an expense standpoint what you're looking at for the year. We don't want to leave anybody out, but we would basically do this on a year-to-year, year-to-year basis, but it would be in policy now. And so, Jim, do you want to, Jim's been really a big, big part of this as well, so let Jim talk.
Well, I just want the general public to know that we are not buying any land, we are not providing money for any, any of this, any of the preservation of the land. We are simply helping with expenses on this at this point in time, and I think everything else is pretty self-explanatory with this, that as money is available and as we have farmers that are retiring and want to put their land in, in conservation easements, then we want to help out and keep our county from being inundated with apartment complexes, with businesses of all kinds, and help keep the beauty of Rowan County through farmland
So, the funding part, you guys kind of see what we're doing? The, the full amount's going to go in there, and then we'll just work with you on, on what the need is every year. There could be a year where we bring in a lot, and then maybe the next year, there's not a lot of money that's brought in, but, but, but the money will still be there from prior years that we can draw on. So, that is still not going to go, it's, it's not going somewhere. It'll be in a side fund and available, and we'll just work with you guys on an annual basis to, I, I guess what we, what we don't want to do on behalf of the taxpayers is that just goes in there, and then we've got millions of dollars in there, and there's no expense to show for it. So, we will work with you to make sure that those who want to take part in this program, there's plenty of funding there for it, okay? Have I beat it to death? Okay? We good? All right. All right. All right, I'll make, we don't need to, Jay, we don't need to do a public hearing on this yet. All right. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Rowan County Farmland Preservation Fund Policy effective April 7, 2025. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we got a lot of seconds. Further discussion. All right, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, guys, for bringing this to us, okay? All right, we appreciate it. All right, we got a few board appointments. Let me run through these, and we'll approve them all at once. Boston Heights Volunteer Fire Department Board of Trustees, Jason Reed Courier and Charles Haas applied for a reap, reapportment of two seats. Boston Heights, there are three applicants for three county seats. Ronald Christopher Warren Barger, Virgil Meisenheimer, and Tracy Weincoff. Cleveland County Volunteer Fire Department, there's two applicants, Claude Leon Rogers Jr. and Byron Lewis. Historic Landmarks Commission, Giovanni Vincent Spillman applied for reap, reapportment at an at-large seat. Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee, William Randy Kroll and Krista Woolley applied for appointment of two at-large seats. Our Local Emergency Planning Committee Board. We have the following applications. Mr. Monty Gibson is a Hinkle representative. Karen Hamby is an NCEM area coordinator. Bethany Perez, Rowan County Health Department representative. Ms. Kalima McCoy, Hexagon Agility representative. Mr. David Pattern, Norfolk Southern representative. And Mr. Craig Pierce, Commissioner Pierce, is a designee from the Board of Commissioners. Also, Mount Mitchell Volunteer Fire Department Commissioners, Brenda Lael McClellan and Jackie Bearden have applied for two seats. Rockwell Rural Volunteer Fire Department Board of Trustees, Kelly Dean Wilhelm has, has applied for one of those seats. Rowan County Housing Authority, Gene Beaver, let me pass on that. Rowan County, Rowan's, South Salisbury Volunteer Fire Department, two applications received, Michael Goodman, Robert Bowles, and Union Volunteer Fire Department, Kevin Kessler for reapportment. Do we have a motion to approve all those appointments?
Second.
And a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then one last on Rowan County Housing Authority, Gene Beaver has tendered his resignation. Motion to accept that?
No.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, I'd like to then, yes?
Mr. Jones? Just before we move on, I just wanted to let the Commissioners know that I have, I have a citizen that is interested in that position, Mr. Beaver.
All right, the board is asked to enter into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A1 to consider approval of the minutes of closed session held on March 17, 2025, and to consult with an attorney in to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318 11A6 for personnel. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll get started as soon as we clear out. All right, do we have a motion to come out of closed session?
No move.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have one item that we need to attend to out of closed session, and that is to provide a $6,654 stipend paid annually in August for the next three years for our health department director, who will be working on her PhD, and so the county is going to share in that cost because that's a benefit to the county. We'll have, each year, we'll have its own three-year clawback applied to each of the payments. Is that good enough? All right, make that in form of a motion.
Second.
Second, Craig. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Pierce, do you have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.